Good evening, welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education for May 4th, 2015. We'd like to welcome those of us who are in our audience this evening and those of us who are, or those of you rather, who are watching from home. The Committee of the Whole Meeting, just so those who are, who are in attendance or watching understand the setup of this type of meeting, this is a meeting where we are discussing typically at length, questions and answers on topics that are coming before the Board. This is not a voting meeting. We will decide at the end of each topic whether or not this, this topic needs more discussion, or whether it's going to go on to our next meeting for a vote at that time, but there will not be any votes taken at this meeting tonight, it's a lot of discussion. And frankly, this is, if you're looking for a lot of detailed information on the topics that are on the agenda, this is my favorite kind of meeting to have folks attend because you'll hear the most discussion, questions and answers and so forth, so it's typically a very informative meeting. The first item on our agenda is Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips, do I have anybody who would like to address the Board this evening? Nope? Okay. Seeing none, we will go on to the next item on our agenda. Next item is our Committee, I'm sorry, our Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Laura is our Chair.
Thank you, President Burton, and today we have two items on our agenda for Curriculum Committee. Our first item is the Dropout Recovery Program, and Mr. Archibald is going to lead us in a further discussion because we did talk about this item at our study meeting. Mr. Archibald?
Good evening, nice to see everyone today. And if you're ready, I will go ahead and begin.
Sure, please do.
As you know from our previous discussion, Livonia Public Schools has been exploring, entering into an agreement with Graduation Alliance to provide a dropout recovery program in our district. Such an agreement would occur, it's an annual agreement, that is renewable each year, both parties are in agreement. We have been reviewing this throughout the second semester, we've had a subcommittee which has included secondary administrators from each of our high schools, secondary counselor from each of our high schools, and representatives from the Student Services Department, as well as pupil accounting and our business office. We have also done some follow-up with other districts, mainly in Oakland County, who have been using Graduation Alliance as their dropout recovery program for a few years, and got some feedback from them and were able to ask some questions. So, Graduation Alliance partners with school districts across the United States to locate, to re-engage, and ultimately graduate former dropouts or other at-risk students. The information that we've received from them indicates that in Michigan, the success rate for students who are within one to six credits of graduation is approximately 90%. And obviously, the farther a student is from graduation, those numbers tail off a little bit, but for students who are within one to six credits, which is typically a school year. Section 23A of the Revised School Code provides the opportunity for districts operating a dropout recovery program to claim one-twelfth of the FTE for each month that eligible pupil is enrolled in the program. Indifferent than a traditional program, this is actually a 12-month program, and then we are, for each student who is eligible for funding, which to be eligible, they need to be making progress each month, and progress is defined as earning at least two quarter credits, and be age-appropriate, which is, they have not turned 21 by September 1st of that year. So, the students, we would essentially, the student, if a student is successful in a month, then Graduation Alliance would bill us, and then we would use the foundation allowance from that month to then reimburse Foundation, or Graduation Alliance. The difference, there is a slight difference there, the cost per month for Graduation Alliance is $550 per student, and we are eligible based on our current foundation allowance to receive $675 per student. So, over the course of a year, if a student's successful for 12 months, we would actually generate about $1,500 in revenue above our costs. Eligible students are those who can't or won't attend a traditional program. Most commonly, in Graduation Alliance, they find that these are students, teen parents, caregivers, or students who are currently on suspension or expulsion. Graduation Alliance, their home office is in Utah. Unfortunately, they have an office local also, so we don't get to tour, go visit Utah for a field trip. I did offer. This is an online program that's fully accredited through Advanced Ed. Their courses are aligned to the Michigan Merit Curriculum and the Common Core. This program follows the LPS graduation requirements. All teachers are certified and have highly qualified status in their content areas. The Internet access and computer are provided by Graduation Alliance, at no cost to the district or to the student. One of the key components of this program, and I think to ultimately the success of the students, is the wraparound services that are available. They provide a local advocate who serves as a mentor. This is a person or persons who they hire from the community. They meet weekly with the students. They have a variety of responsibilities with them, they can include anything as, you know, proctoring tests, they serve as a life coach, they help the student resolve some obstacles, they may or may not be school-related that are maybe interfering with their ability to complete the program successfully. They may be able to put them in touch with local agencies that can provide some of the support assistance to meet whatever individual needs they, you know, they may have based on their situation. Each student has an academic coach, this person meets with the student weekly, they are essentially working as a student's cheerleader, and helping students manage the program, and work as kind of a link between Graduation Alliance and the student, again, just to help move them along through the program and, you know, kind of keep them encouraged and positive and hopefully moving in the right direction. They provide both transition and academic counseling. There's no set timeframe for these meetings, they occur on a regular basis, in which they develop the education plan, monitor credits, are in communication with the district and with the student in terms of their fulfillment of the graduation requirements. The meetings with the students do become more frequent as the student nears graduation. And so, again, that's the transition of the academic counselor. There is also 24, online tutoring 24/7, I think they may not do it on Christmas and New Year's Eve, I think I saw, but, pretty much 24/7. And also, the teachers have access to the online instructors through a chat board type of an exchange. So, again, those are the wraparound services. This is a cost-neutral program, in fact, we have a cost benefit guarantee from Graduation Alliance, and there are no upfront costs for the district. Again, I explained that we would get invoiced each month for students who are successful in the program for the previous month. And, I know that you're going to have questions, but I'll go through the LPS requirements. We simply, in fact, we have a meeting scheduled for later this month if we do end up moving forward, where we'll have an implementation team that will meet with Graduation Alliance and begin a process to get this in place, should the Board approve it. We will simply provide a list of names to Graduation Alliance, and then it's their job, their responsibility to go out and recruit, and they find these students, whether it's through, you know, social media, message boards on a bulletin board in a restaurant or a store, however they do it, they do it, but they'll, that's nice, they put a lot of resources behind, you know, trying to recruit these students, trying to find them and get them re-engaged back into school, but also to try and identify what some of the obstacles were that inhibited their success, and then hopefully, if they can get the student reregistered and re-engage, get some things back in place, maybe that will help them be successful. We will obviously provide our course information to Graduation Alliance, we'll provide them with the graduation requirements, and there are some things along the pupil accounting side and the business side, which will get in place, but we have folks from our, from our district who will serve under this, what I'm calling, implementation team that will make sure that we're on top of all of that. Ultimately, it will be, I, for now, I'll be sort of the gatekeeper of the program, and LPS will approve any student who comes in, so Graduation Alliance may identify them and students ready to go, and then ultimately, there'll be a meeting with me and possibly someone from the school from which that student last attended, and sit down with them and have a conversation before they're making a decision whether the student would continue in the program or not. And then ultimately, the district approves when a student has fulfilled the graduation requirements, and we award a diploma. So, that's sort of it, in a nutshell. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments? Mrs. Bonnefield?
You answered the question, but I'm going to ask it just to make sure, and you said it's cost-neutral, so I'm assuming that that means that if they are not successful during the month, even if they are still working with Graduation Alliance, that they are not going to bill us if we're not receiving our foundation allowance?
That's correct. And so, and then they have a probationary status where if a student, and I don't know it exactly, but if a student goes a month without meeting success, then they have a process for that, and then it may be two months or three months from there where a student could ultimately be removed from the program, but we will not get invoiced for any student who doesn't meet the description of success that I talked about earlier.
Okay. And we have talked about, no program is perfect.
Correct.
And I just want to clarify, we have nothing in place now, correct?
We do not have a, an alternative education program for Gen Ed students currently, correct?
And so, this is going to go a lot, in a, a long way to helping these kids where there may otherwise not be an option?
It is very possible. It will not fill that, the complete void of an alternative.
Correct.
Program, but it will put some dirt back in the hole, if you will. And, again, we firmly believe in all the folks who have met and can look at this, that the best place for our students to get the support and the services they need and whatnot is in our programs, in our schools.
Absolutely.
But certainly, as perhaps a last effort, this may be, you know, a best, worst-case scenario for a student to get through.
Perfect. And I also wanted to thank you, I know I had some questions last week about the wraparound services, and I appreciate you getting that additional information for me.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, or for us.
Let me just expound on the point a little bit, that we do have some credit recovery opportunities for our kids.
Okay.
Sometimes it can take a seventh hour at our high school, we also have the adult education programs that they can, that they can participate in, so we have some other credit recovery options, but to Steve's point, what I think what we're most excited about with this is, we know that we lose some kids, and so, the kids who are going to our adult education class or are trying to catch up on their credits, we still have them, and that's the best place for them to be, but we know some of them drop off, and we can't find them, we don't know where they're at, they're gone. And so, they will actually go out and find these kids and give them a second, third, or fourth chance, whatever it might be, so that's what's exciting about, one of the things that's exciting about this, that we're going to have some, hopefully have some kids that graduate that we would not have been able to reach out and garner in one of our handful of opportunities now.
Thank you. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Steve, about how many kids do we have in LPS who would qualify for this program?
If you go over the last three years of data and I drop out the information, I would say we are north of 125 students. And that's over a three-year period.
That's a good number.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. Mr. Archibald, do you know what the success rate is on a program, on this program? Do they have any information on how many students that enter the program actually end up with a diploma?
I can get more specifics, the only thing that I, that I recall so far is, you know, what I shared, that students within six credits in Michigan are about 90% successful in reaching their diploma. I'd be happy to contact the representative there and get some additional information on the success rates.
Okay. And secondly, I think it's great that they have a coach to guide them along, but do you know how that process, how that takes place? Do they meet them in their home? Do they meet them at their local business, in the office? How is that handled?
All the examples that I had shared, they meet somewhere outside from school, but they meet typically in a, in a public.
In public.
In a public place. I, in any of the examples of communications that I had, I didn't get any communication in terms of we would be meeting at any student's home.
Okay.
So, I would expect it would occur in the offsite, but in a public location.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Any others? President Burton?
Yes, Mr. Archibald, I understand that, again, the, the computers and the software and online accessibility is provided by the program, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, again, the, since this program does follow Livonia Public Schools' graduation requirements, that diploma will be from Livonia Public Schools?
Correct.
Correct? Alrighty. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. If these students, if, if the timeline that they're in this program coincides with standardized testing like M-Step or whatever we're going to be doing in the future, will these students come and test at Livonia, or how will that work?
They will correct, they will test, and they would have to come to Livonia to test, which is obviously where we do the testing, but they are, as they are re-enrolled, as our students are then responsible for any testing that we are administering to their respective grades.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Johnson?
Couple of questions, thank you, Mrs. Laura. Steve, to go on, follow up on some of the questions that Ms. Jarvis asked, of those 125 students that, that would qualify, are there any statistics from Graduation Alliance that would tell us how many of those 125, number one, would end up getting contacted, and number two, would get into the program? Do they have those?
Not speaking from statistics, more perhaps anecdotally in my conversation with Rob from Graduation Alliance, he would expect about 10% of the students that, of the students whose names we give them, they would expect about a 10% identification and re-engagement rate.
Do we run into any problems divulging the names of those students?
Well, they've been doing it forever, so it's a, it's a question we can follow up on, but if it's us trying to reach out to someone who hasn't graduated yet so they can continue their work, I'm assuming we're okay on that, but we'll, we'll double check that.
And we are able to share information with other, I mean, they are essentially on a contract with LPS to provide a service on our behalf, but I'd be happy to.
You may end up having what they call an agency relationship, which would tie you together, I would think.
That seems, that seems to make sense, but it's a good question, to make sure we have, we have tied up.
I just don't know how to answer that question.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Laura.
President Burton?
Mr. Archibald, we're mentioning the 125 students, I know that even if we have a student who needs as little as one more class in order to graduate after their senior year of June is completed, so if they have to come back and either take a summer school class or a class the following semester, they are, they are considered at a not-graduated rate, or numbers. And even if they come back through LPS and take that one class over the summer or the following semester, we do not have the privilege of going back and amending our numbers to say that they are now a graduated student.
They, they may not for that particular year, depending on when they finish.
Mm-hmm.
But then, those dropout rates are reported in subsequent years in relation to that cohort, so.
Yeah, they're adjusted.
Okay, so we do get to adjust them. Good. Okay. Are, are any of those students included in that 125, who, who we may have already graduated out, or like, are we looking at, in that 125, are we looking at just the number of students who did not graduate by that June, or are there potentially some in that 125 that, that we've already caught in our own system and graduated out?
When I looked at the number, some list several weeks ago, I was looking at numbers of, lists of students who we have reported as dropouts.
Okay.
So, they would not have been on that list if they had circled back around and completed.
Okay.
But when we compile the lists, we'll go back and communicate with the schools and with pupil accounting and student services to, you know, there may be some students who are on that list who are, and I'm giving a hypothetical, perhaps within a half-credit of graduation.
Right.
Well, if we can work to reconnect with them and get them that half-credit, it might be easier and simpler to do by us just contacting, you know, trying to get ahold of them than going through Graduation Alliance.
Right. And I know some of this has been a problem with our lack of state funding, we only have so many people, and there are only 24 hours in a day, and, and we can only do so much chasing down ourselves, which, which I appreciate the amount that we can do, but I'm also glad that we've got an organization that can come in without an additional cost to LPS that can do more of this chasing down for us, because having these, having kids with, without their high school diploma certainly does not benefit first and foremost the student, but it also doesn't benefit our community. So, if in any way we can, if there's, if this is one more tool that we can give to students and parents to get these kids graduated and on with the next step of their lives, I'm absolutely in favor of it.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Is there any, was there any discussion about students that may qualify for special education services, and if there's any way to capture some of that and get them the additional help if they qualify for IEP?
Through Graduation Alliance, we would still be responsible to keep up and follow the student's IEP.
Okay.
So, that's why student services will be involved.
Okay.
In this process as we, as we go forward, so if we have a special education student, then we need to make sure that we're able to provide whatever it is for the services.
So, they will get those accommodations? Oh, very nice. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Mr. Archibald, as you mentioned about the special needs students and following their IEPs, they have a, I think you said an age limit at 21, but in Michigan for special ed, that's 26. Is there any accommodation for those kids?
In terms of being allowed for them to be able to stay in the program?
Right, if, if they're.
Typically, those kids wouldn't qualify for this type of thing, because the kids that are getting serviced through 26 are not on a diploma track.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Seth? Is this ready to go on the agenda for the May 17th meeting?
I think so.
Okay.
Is this going to consent agenda or regular?
Regular?
I like a regular.
Yeah, so this is a pretty exciting thing for us to get involved in, so.
I would like the community to know about it.
Very good.
Okay. Be certain that they know about it.
Moving on to the second item on our agenda, the renewal of our cooperative agreements. Mr. Archibald?
Good evening, nice to see everyone again. It's been a long time, yes, it has. This is our annual renewal, so I'm here this evening to talk about renewing the cooperative agreements that we have currently with several districts, Northville Public Schools, Plymouth Canton Community Schools, Wayne Westland Community Schools, Redford Union Schools, and the Cresswood School District. As you know, these cooperative agreements allow students from the districts that I mentioned to attend classes at the Livonia Career Technical Center as space permits. LPS students, as we build the schedule, have first opportunity for seats at the Career Center, and then we can backfill open seats with students from these districts. The resident district receives estate aid for the students, and then is invoiced each semester for the amount equivalent to the fractional FTE that student is scheduled at the Career Center. So, if it's a .5 or a three-hour block class at the Career Center, then that's a .5 FTE each semester. Special education services are the responsibility of the resident district. Now, currently, although we haven't taken advantage of this, and to my knowledge, in several years, we have a cooperative agreement in place for our students with Wayne Westland, for our students to go to the William D. Ford Career Technical Center, again, which we haven't used, but also with Wayne Westland, for our students to go to the Tinkham Alternative Center. We have used that on occasion. I am asking to renew the agreement with Wayne Westland for the opportunity to go to their Skill Center, their Career Center. They are currently in the process of redoing the program at the Tinkham Center, and so a cooperative agreement with respect to that program isn't available at this time. And so, again, I'm asking that we can move forward with the agreement for their Career Center and hold off on the Tinkham Center until we have more information from Wayne Westland.
Any questions or comments?
Just before you guys get into questions, just a little bit of history on the Wayne Westland deal. This was the agreement that we came up with a few years ago, where we thought it would be a nice opportunity, because our Career Center has certain programs that Wayne Westland doesn't have, and Wayne Westland has programs that we don't have. And so, for example, they have, they have certain, heating and ventilating classes that they have, and they have classrooms set up for that, and they have some welding classes that they've had in the past, so they've got some more skilled trades types of classes in their program. We've got things like medical assisting and some of our computer programs, and so others, or others are programs that we have that they don't have, and so, between our two school districts, I think we got a whole lot covered, but we thought it would be nice that if they had a student that wanted to come and take a medical assistant class, and we had a student that wanted to take a welding class, we could, we could go ahead and trade, we're off, we're in the same position from a financial standpoint, and yet now we've, we've increased the offerings of, of career technical classes to our kids. And so, just a little bit of background on why we came up with that specific agreement.
If I can add just one other thing, we have, in order to accommodate the, all the LPS students and our other district students, based on what we are expecting for next year, we have been able to add some staffing to the Career Center, and yet still, will still come out to the district's advantage. Currently, we have 83 students signed up from Northville, we have two students signed up from Plymouth Canton, and one student signed up from Cresswood.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of kids.
Yeah.
We're excited about that.
Yeah. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Archibald, is Tinkham possibly out of the picture, or it's just delayed, and it'll come, we'll, it'll, we'll see it shortly?
At this point, I'd say it's no more than delayed, in my communication with the gentleman from the Wayne Westland Central Office, he simply, he sent the agreement for the Skill Center, or Career Center, and just said, "We're redoing our program, and we'll have to have some discussion about that in the near future." So, I'm expecting it's only delayed.
Okay, thank you.
And we have two students there currently, and we may actually be down to one, and even if we don't renew an agreement, then I would have a conversation with them to see if they're allowing that student to at least finish up.
From being in the program, okay.
President Burton? Mrs. Bonnefield, just to follow up on some of your questions, are they, is it, you're understanding that they are remodeling their program, or their, I mean, the content of what they offer, or is it the physical structure of the building that they're doing, they don't have space for our kids?
My understanding is the program.
Okay.
And the services and the program that they'll be providing.
Do you have any idea what they're getting at with that? Because that could be a huge.
I do not.
Okay. Okay.
I figured I would let them do their work, and then I'll come in at the end and see if.
See what they've got.
If they're still willing to, to agree with us, and if it's advantageous to us.
Okay. If it turns out, I recognize that we, we have two students there right now, which is a small number in terms of our district, but it's, two students that it's very important to, and for the benefit of the public, these are students, if I, if I understand correctly, who are not doing well in our typical high school academic setting, and, and they need an alternative education experience, that, that we do not have that physical structure set up right now. Recognizing it's a small number, it's still an important number to those students. If this Tinkham Center does not come through and is somehow unable to provide our opportunity, the opportunity to LPS, is there another district that we know of around, or are we beginning to investigate to find out if we have another alternative in the wings?
There are a couple other alternative programs nearby, Plymouth Canton offers a program, and they have open enrollment schools of choice for, for the Starkweather. I will contact Mr. Albrecht at Wayne Westland this week, and at least have the conversation regarding our students who are there currently.
Okay.
So, that's a good point.
Yeah, I don't.
So, it certainly will be on our radar if it's not available. Like you said, there aren't many students that participate in the program over there, because it's, you know, we do refer kids to both the Plymouth Starkweather Program and the program at Garden City, we've done that for years. done that for years. And so, those are kids that are more credit recovery type of kids than the kids who are in the Tinkham Program, which is a bit more intensive. And so, while it isn't utilized much, it's been a great resource for us. And unfortunately, I'm not sure if, you know, if there's anybody that has that kind of program as it's today. But if it's not there, then that's what Steve and I will be doing. We'll be talking to our colleagues in other districts to see if there are other potential programs like this. But I'm not familiar with them right now.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Steve, this is a renewal, so outside of the dates, do the agreements stay the same?
Yes.
Okay, so how do we feel putting it on the agenda? You want it on the consent agenda?
I'm all right with consent.
Okay.
With it being a renewal.
We've done that for several years.
Right, right. Okay. And with that, President Burton, Curriculum Committee is concluded.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda-
Thank you, Mr. Archibald.
Thank you.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is the Finance Committee. I neglected to say at the beginning part of our meeting, if, if you're looking for an agenda, those of us in our audience there on the counter right outside our room, we do have a number of items on our agenda yet. If you're watching from home, you can find it on the LivoniaPublicSchools.org website. If you hover over School Board, you can drop down to Agendas and click on that Agenda if you'd like a copy of that. Our Finance Committee is next, and that is Item Three, and we will hear from Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. We have several items on the Finance Committee Agenda tonight. The first one is bid results for hard surface cleaning equipment, and we welcome Ms. Lisa Abby to talk about that.
Thank you very much. Good evening. This item that we're going to talk about is from the 2013 bond. And you'll recall that when we put together the budget for the bond, we put funds set aside for both custodial and maintenance equipment. And then we actually took those budgets and split them in half so that we would spend half of each of those, the first series of bonds, the 2013 bonds, and then the other half, we set aside that we would use the balance of that with the 2016 series bonds, which is coming up quicker than, than I thought already. So, we have brought several custodial equipment bids to you, and this is almost the end of their source of funding for the 2013 bonds. And they have asked for six pieces of floor cleaning equipment. These are the kind of ride-on mowers for the hard surface floors in the schools. And these will replace each of the ones that we currently have in secondary schools. And those, then we will take those pieces of equipment and move those down to the upper elementary and then move those down to the lower elementary. So that'll help spread out and get some equipment into the lower elementary, which is, or, excuse me, the upper elementary, which is, as you know, are, are actually the size of a middle school. So that'll be very beneficial for them as well. So, speeds up the process significantly in getting this work done in our evening hours after our students go home. So, we did put out a bid. You have the results of the bid tabulation in your packet this week. HP Products out of Belleville, Michigan, was the lowest responsible bidder. Was the lowest bidder period, price-wise, but also the lowest responsible bidder for the six units at $58,050. And we would recommend that we go ahead and purchase this with the 2013 bond funds. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. I know, Ms. Abby, from looking at the tabulations, that this vendor apparently was the only one who met the specs.
Yeah, the other, the actual other rider mowers, most of them were just a little bit too big, actually.
Oh, okay.
And we have some very specific requirements, what will fit in our buildings or in our storage areas. So, they were actually a little bit larger than what we wanted.
And these are just like basic floor scrubber washers, right?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. McDonald?
Is there any quality difference between the units? Do you know?
No, Harry felt that they were all good, good units that were quoted. We had specifically looked for the one that, that HP, that's specifically the model that we put out. The other ones are fine, they're just don't, they're a little too large.
Okay.
And that's probably what you're paying for.
Huh?
That's probably what you're paying for.
Yeah, a little bit more money.
That's why, yeah.
But the others certainly fit our needs, so.
Right. I do have more questions, because I was surprised, I just noticed it, and I guess I didn't look at it. It says Witnessed by Rod Hasman. Is Rod doing work for us again?
He's working for Plant Marant Cressa. If you recall, he has been working for them as a consultant. He's helped us with a variety of areas, including mostly moving, and some other areas as well.
Okay, I was just surprised to see that.
And helping with bids when necessary.
Are there any other questions? Then we'll move on to the second item, also for-
Want to put this on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, let's put this on the agenda. And then we can move on to the second item, which is bid results for IT move management.
I'm sorry, I'm getting handouts ready, Torio.
That's, that is going to be going, the, the previous item for the hard surface cleaning equipment is going to be going on the regular agenda.
I'm sorry, what, I wasn't paying attention.
Regular general.
The regular agenda.
Yes, please. Is part of our Phase Two, or Summer 2015 Bond Renovations, we have already hired a moving company to move furniture and equipment throughout the district. You'll recall that this year, we wanted to do was separate the move for technology, so the actual, having a company come in and unplug and wrap up and box and inventory and move out the technology equipment, and then bring it back and set it into place and make sure that it's working correctly. That, that's the most important part, is we wanted to hire a professional company to do that, that isn't just a moving company. So we did put out a bid for that. You'll see that there are two, or you will see, I'm sorry, because I just handed that to you, that there are two companies that bid. They're both good companies. Corrigan was the low bid to meet all the specifications. You'll recall, we did use Corrigan last year for the, one of the companies that we used last year for actually moving everything. And we were very pleased with Corrigan in terms of their professionalism, their responsiveness. They're a really good company to have in our schools last year. Really helped us get schools up, up and running in the beginning of the year when we had some issues with getting everything unpacked and in the right spot. So, very happy to have them. What Corrigan will be doing is actually subcontracting out another company that will actually do the computer part of it. They'll handle the move part of it, but they have another company out of Fernea that will actually do the computer unhooking, inventory, putting back in place, and making sure it works. So, they have that professionalism. Corrigan uses this company for their own moves. So when they move their offices, they use this company as well. So they feel very confident and comfortable with, with their ability to service us and service us timely and get the computers up and running. So, we are pleased to bring this bid forward. This is a typical Plant Marant Cressa put together. So you, if we flip into that third section, E2, you can look at the budget summary. And you can see for all the schools this summer, we'll be spending $72,401 with the contingency costs, and just a little bit about $11,000 under our original budget for this. So, pleased to bring this forward and looking forward to having a little bit more efficient installation of the computer equipment this summer. So after, when our staff get back, hopefully we'll have everything ready, in place, and ready to go from them timely. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And you can just, you already have this front page document in one of your binders, so you can just take this front page out of your old one and insert this one in. And then this will be your last tab.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Ms. Abby, the company that's doing the actual technology move, do you know who, who that is?
Yes. Did I write it down and bring it? Not, I will send it in your packet this week. Because the name is not coming to the top of my head. It's a computer company, and I'll send it to you this week.
Okay.
President Burton?
The company, the, the company that Corrigan will be subcontracting to for the actual computer move, Corrigan, I assume, is completely responsible for their work?
Yes.
We are responsible only to Corrigan.
Correct.
Anything that happens from Corrigan on down, whether they, their own employees or their subcontractors do the work. Corrigan is, is the one that, that is responsible, and we are responsible only to Corrigan directly.
Correct. Our contract will be with Corrigan for that amount that's in, that's in the stack.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sellers?
Ms. Abby, when do you anticipate the work beginning for the technology move?
Very soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're actually, wherever they can get in, if there's any parts of the building that they can get in, they'll start otherwise the day after, or actually the last day of school.
Okay, thank you.
That's when they'll start. Some, if they can get in some areas earlier, maybe some computer labs, if they, you know, can get in two days earlier, they'll get into those a couple days earlier. So, it will depend on what's going on in our schools at the end of the school year.
Great. And if they're typically done, if school gets out on Thursday, they would typically be done by Friday because we're-
Correct. Because we start, we'll start the asbestos removal. So it depends on what part of the building and what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, it's like boom, it's over.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. I know we have Franklin on here. And I know the overall project at Franklin is going to take two summers.
Right.
Are we going to see a technology budget move for next year as well?
Yes.
Okay.
For Franklin. This will just be for the half of the building.
All right. Thought that was probably the case, but wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Sellers?
Remind me again what we're doing to store this, this equipment?
It's at your house, Dan.
Hopefully, you air-condition your garage. Drive, basically, garage volunteers.
Yeah.
I think it's coming to the warehouse for storage, but I will verify that and have that in your packet. That was one of the original discussions.
Yeah.
Some, some, sometimes it's in a secure location in the building, but most of the time it comes over here.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Just like to point out that I'm glad that, like several other items so far, this is coming under budget.
Yes.
So, happy to hear that. Thanks very much to our administration and to Cressa to working hard to get that accomplished.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
We will put this on the May 17 regular agenda?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. As long as we have Mrs. Abby here, we can move on to the Wayne County RISA 2015-16 budget.
Thank you very much again. As you know, law passed several years ago requires that local school boards actually approve or deny, approve or disapprove, the Wayne County, in our case, Wayne County ISD budget. Hopefully, you all got that in your packet last week and had a chance to look it over. I have looked at it. This budget is very consistent with prior years. I didn't notice anything really dramatic to point out to you. In the general fund, Wayne County ISD does continue to spend down their fund balance a little bit. They're going from about a 60% fund balance down to a 56%. Sounds like a lot, but it's not a lot of money in total. Their fund balance projected for the current year is just a little over $10 million, and then for next year, a little over $9 million. And they have about a 15, a $16 million general fund budget. So that's really one of their smallest budgets. You'll recall that Wayne County ISD provides a variety of services to 33 districts and I think it's something like a hun, over 100 academies in the Wayne County, as well as to some districts outside of Wayne County. They collect all the resources for the Act 18 Fund, which provides special education center programs, of which, as you know, we are an operator of four programs. They also provide administrative services, such as our computer services for finance and student accounting. They also collect significant federal funds for distribution, including our special ed IDEA program, as well as, they're actually the fiduciary for our GSRP program that we've talked about, the Great Start Readiness program, as well as our adult education. So they act as a fiduciary for many funded projects for districts. They also provide the Medicaid outsources that we've seen, where we keep, we do get some Medicaid funds every year for certain services that we provide at the district level. And again, I don't see any major changes in, from prior years in their budget, and I would recommend that the board approve it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mrs. McDonald?
Ms. Abby, I have a question, and I, I apologize for maybe not understanding the Act 18 Fund. Am I reading this right, that they have $158 million in their fund balance?
You do, you do read that correctly. And if you remember, we've talked about, so this is the Special Education Fund, where generally it's, or exclusively, almost exclusively, if you look at it, this is a collection of property taxes. And I think Dr. Leopold has shared some charts over the year. Depending on how property taxes are going determines on how much funds come into this. Well, what we've seen over the years is that we're seeing, especially since 2008, obviously, a reduction in the amount of resources we're getting from property taxes, but a significant increase in the amount of demand for services and cost for services. So, you can picture that line on a bar graph, you know, our revenue's going down and our expenses are going up. So for the last couple of years, there's been a team at Wayne County RISA that, a committee that's been working to reduce some of those costs. And we've talked about some of the implications of that here in our district, where we've had some loss of staff in the Act 18 program. You've seen some requirements change for the severity of students that actually meet the requirements for the Act 18 program. You'll, you remember Kathy Donagrande and what became the Livonia Transition Program as a result of that change at the Skill Center. So we have seen some costs come down, and some slight betterment in, in the property taxes. But the real reason that this fund balance exists is for the future. So, if, and again, for years, maybe a few years ago, we were seeing the end of the world in 2016, 2017, where that line would cross and there wouldn't be enough money to fund all the programs. So Wayne County RISA has always, or tried to take the position of making sure that they're looking out over five, 10, 15 years to be able to fund that Act 18 program, so that there aren't, which, some of you might remember, the vermic chargeback to districts, which there was in the past, meaning if there's not enough money to fund all of the programs and all the students, then Livonia's share of that cost, pay for our students, we would have to pay for it. We'd have to get that out of the general fund. Or if we had fund balance in our special ed program, center program, we could use that. So, that's what that resource has been built up for. So, looks like a lot of money, but that is to, to provide protection for the future for programs. Long answer.
Yeah, I was really surprised at the amount. Thought, well, maybe I'm not reading it right, but.
Dr. Leopold?
Just add a little bit of histor, history to that. There actually is a county-wide special education property tax millage, as Lisa had mentioned. And when that passed several years ago, we started planning out, we, the superintendents of Wayne County, started planning out how long we thought that money could last. And it's been a significant process for us because we are now at the state limit in regards to how much we can ask for, for special education millage. Other counties aren't. It all depends, as Lisa said, the property tax base that you have. And in Wayne County, our property tax base is not what it is in Oakland County, or Macomb County, or Washtenaw County. And so, we've monitored that very closely because if, for example, we end up in a position where the costs of the program are running higher than the revenues in the program, we are required by law to provide the programs. And so, we have to make up, local school districts have to make up the difference if they have students in those programs. And so, that's a big, big issue because, as you know, we've been talking budget, budget, budget. And if we were in a position of talking budget, 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 and we were required to put in a couple hundred thousand dollars into the county system to make sure that we're continuing these mandated programs, that just, you know, causes another potential budget problem for us. And so, school districts and administrators across Wayne County have spent a lot of time over the last four or five years determining what we can do to make sure those three mills last as, as long as possible. And at one time, as Lisa mentioned, we thought we would be potentially out of money right now. But because we've been very careful with that budget, with the expenditures in, in those programs, we are in a position now where we think that those dollars will last us well past 2020. We're looking at 2021, 2022, and we were looking at maybe 2015 before the, where we would run out. And so, and so we're in pretty good shape for a period of time into the future, and we'll be continuing to have to monitor that. And that's why there's this committee, to making sure that we're not just looking at this year, but we're looking at down the road. What are we going to do to make sure school districts aren't in a position where, with their budget struggles, they've got to come up with another X number of hundreds of thousands of dollars in our budget to balance that. At one time, we were looking at chargebacks in the millions for our school district based on our side. So it would have been us, Wayne Westland, Plymouth Canton, would have been looking in the chargebacks in the millions. But we've been able to manage that pretty well. And I think we're in pretty good shape going into the next six, seven years. So again, just a little bit of history in regards to how that all works. shape going into the next six, seven years. So again, just a little bit of history in regards to how that all works.
Thank you. Mrs. McDonald?
Dr. Leopold, when does this millage, when is it supposed to expire?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I can't remember. It's a good question, actually. I can't remember when it expires, the existing three mills. I think it goes out for quite a while, but I don't remember.
Okay.
Yeah, I would confirm that out, though.
Any other questions? President Burton?
Dr. Leopold, for the benefit of the public, we have, we have a number of folks here in our audience tonight who are from Perrinville, who are probably quite intimately involved and knowledgeable about the funding for special education. But there are a number of folks in the general public who probably are not. Can you give just a brief overview of, of where some of the pieces of funding for special education come from? It's certainly not all from this Wayne County budget.
Correct. There are, first of all, there are programs that are run countywide, and they're, and it's done to be as efficient as possible and to provide the best programs for possible for kids. And so these are kids where there are not as many students. They're more, the disabilities are more severe, and at the same time, they don't, you're not going to find as many students that qualify for those particular services in each school district. And so we partner with school districts across all of Wayne County to provide services, for example, for students that are in the autism program, are qualified for certain programs under the autism program, or, as you know, the moderately or cognitively impaired program, the MOCHI program that we have at Webster. The Skill Center program where we have for the students that go up to 26 that are not on a high school diploma, those students are at the Wayne County Skill Center. And so we run several of those programs, and we have our students in those programs, but we also receive students from all over western Wayne County into those programs. At the same time, we send students to the Northville program for severely disabled students. We send students to the Wayne Westland program, because they have specific programs that they're running that we don't run. And so it's been very advantageous to be able to run these as a consortium throughout the county, because if you have three or four students that have that disability, now they can go to maybe a program where there are seven or eight students, you know, in the general area, and we're able to provide more services and have more skilled people in each of those different areas by working together, as opposed to all of us just trying to take care of all of our individual kids with all of those special needs. And so that's the concept. There's actually an agreement among all Wayne County school districts that, that we all agree that these, these particular programs with these particular disabilities will provide in consortium, and that's where we can levy and collect those three mills. Separate from that, there's also state funding that comes in to help pay for those programs. And so the foundation allowance for every one of those students goes into the Wayne County pot, so to say, to pay for these programs, as does any dollars that would be collected from the federal government for those particular programs. And so they collect those dollars and disperse those at the county level. Separate from that, you go to the school district. We have special education costs in our budget that you approved. You just saw the Wayne County programs that are provided. But we have programs, so any student in our, in our school district that is eligible for special education services through an individual education program process, they can be identified to be eligible for services, and they may not fit the county criteria for those particular countywide programs for the more severely disabled students, but they still qualify for special education services. And so we're responsible for providing services for those kids. And so if you think about our Buchanan Center as one example, those are all local Livonia Public Schools kids, but they need a special self-contained classroom support program. Or if you look at our resource room teachers at every one of our schools, where students may be in the general education program, but then they're released for a portion of the day to go down to the resource room to receive support, or potentially to the speech teacher. We have a lot of students that qualify for speech services. Those types of programs are funded locally, and so we get our foundation allowance to pay for them. And then the state also provides what they call special education categorical money for us to pay for them. Does not come close to covering the cost.
Thank you.
Yes, does not come close to covering the cost. So out of our, out of the rest of our money that we collect for, you know, every student that we have in the school district, well over $10 million, we have to pay out of our general fund operating budget to cover those required special education costs, because we only get about 20, I think it's 28% of the, of the costs that are covered through the foundation allowance in these special education categoricals. We have to pick up the rest of those dollars. Fortunately, at the county level, we can levy that millage, and they can pick up the rest of the money for those programs, as long as it's enough. But at the local level, school districts across the state of Michigan have to pick up that balance out of their own general operating budget. So those particular programs for more mildly impaired students are in our general operating budget. And like I said, example, Buchanan program, resource room teachers, speech services that are provided in our, in our, in our local public, our local elementary, middle, and high schools.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Abby, am I correct in understanding that we need to vote on this by June 1st?
Correct. So we would like to put this on the next voting meeting if we could, and we'll ask you to vote affirmatively or against the budget. I would recommend affirmative.
Let's put that on the agenda.
Are we okay with the consent agenda on this one?
I agree. We have to vote.
Yeah, we need to pass a resolution on it, I believe. It needs to be the resolution form. Ms. Abby?
You have it in your packet.
That's what I thought. Okay. So yeah, it does need to be a separate vote. Or anyway, it should be, in my opinion.
Okay, sorry about that. Got it down. Regular agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Abby. The next item on our agenda is the added schools of choice consideration and student attraction and retention. And we'll have Dr. Leopold and Ms. Okus.
Thank you very much. Andrea's handing a handout to you. Just a little bit of background information. Again, as you know, the Board of Education already approved us the ability to accept students where we have space at our early grades under the state limited schools of choice program. And I would highlight that this is the third item out of four items on our agenda today that relate to us working very, very hard on revenue enhancement ideas as we look at our budget for next year. And so as you all know, we spent quite a bit of time with our community in January, talking about our budget challenges and what we can and should do about them. And you will recall from those conversations, we heard loud and clear, that before we look at specific programs, we want to look at revenue enhancement and cost containment ideas to maintain programs. And so you have before you today four items as part of our ongoing effort to make sure we're doing our very, very best that we can to generate those dollars to protect our programs in our school district. Again, the Board of Education has already considered this. This is the second year that we're looking at limited school of choice enrollment in our regular general education programs. This year, it was K through four. Last year, it was K through six. You initially approved us accepting up to 50 students in those, for those five grades. And as we have reported to you, for those 50 slots that we had opened, we actually had 108 applications from interested parties in school districts outside of our own. And so again, as I mentioned, and we did talk about this earlier, that we may come back with this particular idea for you to generate even some additional dollars, again, with the purpose of if we accept another, you know, up to 50 students, that's money that will benefit the other 15,000 students that are in our school district. And that's why we bring this forward to you. And so because we have had, we had the interest that we shared with you, we have had, we've got, you know, some other ideas about potentially expanding above and beyond the 50 students that you would already approve. And so what I'm going to do is let Andrea cover the details of that with you. And when she's done, and after we do cover conversation on that, I do want to spend some time talking about our other efforts in student retention and attraction. And so with that, Andrea, why don't you go ahead and cover the options?
Thanks, Dr. Leopold. Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
So you have four different options in front of you, and we discussed these a bit at the last study session. As you know, as Dr. Leopold said, we do currently have 50 students accepted for next year. And I did attach for you, just for your reference, the second page is the memo we received a couple of weeks ago, to remind you how many students we've accepted at each grade level, and how many students are left on the waitlist. And so one of the things that we had talked about were what were our options to perhaps recapture those students who are on the waitlist. And as we looked through a variety of options, these are four that we'd like to share with you this evening. And so I'll just go through each of them. Option one is to open a new limited schools of choice window, beginning on May 19th and running through June 2nd. You may recall that the smallest number of days for a window is 15, up to 30 days. And I chose May 19th because you have a voting meeting on May 18th. So should you choose to go forward on May 18th, the soonest we could open that window would be May 19th. The first option would be to open an additional 25 seats at kindergarten, 10 seats at grade one, and then five seats at grades two, three, and four each, for a total of 15. And with those five grade levels, we would have 50 additional seats. So as you can, as you take a look at that, you would see that those open seats would essentially cover all of the students on the waitlist for kindergarten, should they choose to reapply and, you know, want to continue to participate. At first grade, it would cover all but one of the students on the waitlist. In second grade, it would cover the students on the waitlist, the third, all but two. And with the exception of fourth grade, where there would still be nine remaining students on the waitlist, because we actually had 19 applicants at the fourth grade level, and as you recall, we only took five. So we would have the 15-day window. We would personally contact each family on the waitlist, so we have all of their information. They've already received the letter stating that their child was not chosen in the lottery. We would follow up personally with each of those families, let them know of the new window, and give them the opportunity to reapply. And then we would anticipate that the revenue for that would be up to $400,000, depending on if we were able to garner an additional 50 applicants, and it was at the correct grade levels as we have listed here. A second option would be to, again, open that same window from May 19th to June 2nd, but limit the openings to kindergarten and first grade only. 25 at kindergarten, 10 at first grade, for a total of 35 additional seats. And the anticipated revenue for that would be up to $264,000. We then have a third option, which would be to open a new limited schools of choice window only for kindergarten. So we would open for 25 additional seats, again, for that 15-day window, and anticipated revenue would be up to $200,000. Or finally, if we did not want to, if the board chose not to open a second window, as you know, the law allows us, beginning the third week in August, which would be the week of August 17th, to take a look at our enrollment, to take a look at where we have openings in our school, and if there are openings at the grade levels where we previously had advertised, and where we have students on the waitlist, you can then contact those students, and they may come in to register at that time for the following school year. So because it's a bit of time between now and August, if the board chose to go in that direction, we would like the opportunity to contact those families and just update them on where we are. That at this point in time, we don't have another window that's open. However, we would be in contact with them again in August to let them know if there were seats available, and if they had not already made another educational option for their family. And so that's a little bit more uncertain, as you see, that we could take up to however many students the board determined at that point, if it was all 58, or any, any number within. But that number's a bit more uncertain. As you recall, the closer you get to the school year, the more likely it is that folks have already made their educational decision for their family. So I wouldn't anticipate we would probably get off of that waitlist maybe more than a dozen or so, maybe, maybe two dozen at the most. So those are the four options we'd like to share with you this evening. And I believe our recommendation would be to move forward with a 15-day window, and for as many seats as you are comfortable offering.
Again, we're bringing this forward as we're watching closely what's going on in Lansing with the budget for next year, and doing everything that we can to generate some additional revenues for the other 15,000 students that are, that are with us. And so since we know that we already have these people on the waitlist, we think that if we strike while the iron's hot, so to say, we'd be able to capture many of them to, because they obviously applied just, you know, just last month, that we think we'd be able to capture many of them and generate some additional revenue for next year, as opposed to what other decisions, whatever other decisions we have to make. And as Andrea mentioned, the longer we wait, the, you know, the ability for us to have them come in gets more and more difficult. So it's really just a decision of what you're comfortable doing, and how much revenue you want to generate above and beyond the first 50 that we accepted in April.
President Burton?
Mrs. Okus, we've had the program going for the, for the first year, over this past year. Can you please tell us what the pros and cons have been, as you've seen it and as you've heard it from the principals and teachers who have been on the front lines of dealing with our students on a day-to-day basis?
Sure, I'd be happy to. As you know, this was unknown to all of us, other than for some of our specialty programs, where, you know, we already had about 100 or 110 students in various ways, A-CAD, May-CAD, IB, already in our district. But this was a little bit different in that they were spread across our schools and not in a specific program. And so throughout the year, we've had that as a topic to get feedback from our schools, from our principals. And the response has actually been overwhelmingly positive. I think people were pretty uncertain about whether or not there may be some of the issues that were shared earlier with regard to, you know, where, where students came in and gaps in curriculum, coming from a different district, students who may have high absenteeism, and so on.
Drop off and pickup was a big concern.
Right.
Because people were coming from a lot farther away.
Yes. And I will say, in a couple of instances, some tardies have been, were an issue, and have, have been continuously supported and addressed. I will say that's not entirely unusual. Across all of our schools, for our students who actually live within our boundaries, sometimes tardiness can be an issue that we deal with. So with the exception of a couple of students where the principals worked with that family, we've actually had a very, very positive response. In fact, a couple of folks have said, gosh, I've forgotten who they are. They're one of our kids. They're, they're one of ours now. And a couple teachers actually had shared with us that they had students in their class. In fact, we had one in our forum group. They had had a, a teacher had had a student in their class and said, what a lovely family, and what a wonderful student, you know, the child was, and how glad she was to have that child in her class. And so generally, what we're finding is these are, these are folks who are pretty committed to their child's education, and who are seeking what they feel is, is the best educational option. And so we've actually had a very positive experience with that this year.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. I'm sure, I would assume that we're all glad to hear that, because all those, those types of things that you talked about were concerns on the part of everyone, and, and not totally unfounded, because we, we've heard from some districts that have gone before us in, in the, the limited schools of choice, conversation that these are things to think about and to, to monitor closely. Dr. Leopold, surrounding districts, and districts in our area, not even that physically touch our borders, but in our area, are looking at schools of choice as unfortunately, we're not getting adequate funding from the state, and we need to go to more and more creative cost, cost containment and revenue enhancement ideas. Can you give us a rough ballpark of the districts that you're aware of, and the numbers that they're, they're looking at, either they're doing this year or looking at proposing for next year for schools of choice?
Yeah, I really, I know Wayne County has that information, and I don't have a committed memory. I do know that Plymouth Canton opened up for 200 slots last year, and they, I think, received about 120 applications. Northville, to my recollection, does not do schools of choice. Farmington has done limited schools of choice. I don't remember the specific numbers, and it's typically, typically at the earlier grades, just as we do. And other Redfords, I can't remember. Other Redfords, do you remember, Andrea?
I don't. I think you're correct about Farmington. They've generally done K1 or K12. I believe Plymouth Canton, I believe, is moving forward with a similar number for next year.
Okay.
And ours has been very, very active in regards to unlimited schools of choice, actually, similar to Plymouth Canton, as I think they've accepted up to 600 or some kids over the last several years. So it's somewhat of a mixed bag, but more and more school districts are looking at that to try to balance their enrollments out.
Okay. And our enrollment, I assume that our enrollment is projected to decline at about the same 300 that we've been looking at per year, every year over the last?
Yes.
Many years?
Yes.
And unfortunately, for those who may be new to this conversation, it's, it's not in bundles of 25 in certain buildings. They're scattered among all of our buildings and all of our grades. So it's very difficult to reduce our costs commensurate to the number of students that we're losing. Even with, with the number that we had approved already, 50, if we went to the highest number on our list of options here, which is an additional 50, that's 100. So we're still down 200 students from, from this year going into next year. So we're not looking at adding to our student population overall. We're looking at... We're looking at basically stopping the gap there, at least, or plugging some of that, some of that gap.
Yeah, that's our goal, I would highlight again, that when we look at our enrollment trends, we've been monitoring, obviously, these for quite some time. Where we're at today is exactly where we would have predicted we were going to be at seven or eight years ago, as we've monitored our own enrollment projections, SEMCOG data, et cetera. The bottom line is, you know, we're about 1% of the state, and back in 2000, we had 18,000 kids, and guess what? The state had 1.8 million kids. And if you look today, we have about 15,000 students, and the state has 1.5 million students. And so the trends have been pretty consistent across the state. You saw them gradually increasing in the late 90s, leveling off around 2000, and then across the state of Michigan, they've been declining since then. So unless you're in a community like South Lyon, where they're building a lot of new neighborhoods, even the newer neighborhoods now in Wayne County are starting to see the same type of attrition that we are. So when you look at Plymouth Canton as an example, their enrollment decline is now like our enrollment decline, because they're pretty much built up, just like Livonia is, and people are staying in the communities. And so they're seeing the same trends that we are. And we saw a small kindergarten class last year. We were a little surprised by that, only to find out that the number of live births in 2009 was the lowest in 100 years in the state of Michigan. And so it's like, wow, okay. Guess what? Five years later, they're kindergartners. And so, you know, those are the trends that we've been seeing, and we see that trend continuing. If you looked at the SEMCOG data, maybe around 2020, it'll be turning back or leveling out again. But those are the trends that we've been projecting for some time, just based on the number of live births in the community.
And if I, just one other point. You've used this word many times, but I'm just going to reiterate to the public again. We are talking about a limited schools of choice. We're not talking about an open schools of choice, which would be, as many students as choose to come, we will accommodate. We're talking about a limited schools of choice, a very definite number, defined in the lower grades intentionally, so we can bring the students in at the very beginning or very near the beginning of their education, and make sure that their education is exactly where LPS students who have been here from day one would be, so that there's not that academic gap that you talked about.
Yes. It is limited, and it's very specific by grade level. And as you said, you know, as we get to second, third, and fourth, we would be recommending only five additional spots. As you know, we have 12 schools, and so when you spread those students out over those schools, you're not talking about a large number at any one of our schools. And we were very cognizant of that in our placement this year.
Yeah, so we do maintain our class sizes on average, and if we need to hire a teacher out of that, we'd hire a teacher out of that, just to make sure that we're maintaining the class size expectations that we've set. So this is where there's basically available in open seats. And if we need to hire a teacher, then we would do it, and we'd still end up a net positive if we had to do that.
That was my last question, is do we anticipate needing to hire a teacher?
Well, no, until the summer.
Okay.
We're watching our kindergarten numbers daily.
Every day.
Okay.
Every day. We're getting there. We're getting there.
Thank you.
Mr. Sellers?
Yeah, I think, just looking, can you tell us the numbers again, last year, the breakdown for kindergarten, first, and second grade? Do you remember that offhand?
Sure, we took 10 students at kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth. So there were 50 students at K-4. Then we took five students at fifth grade and five students at sixth grade. So we took 60 overall.
Yeah, and I noticed when we are looking at the difference between option one and option four, I think the difference we would see there is that we would be, in option four, letting some more students in at the higher grade levels, fourth grade, where we, in option one, we'd kind of be eliminating that a little bit more, and keeping our pool of kids a little bit younger. For me personally, that's something that, just because we haven't seen the influx in the older grades, for that reason, I think option one is something I'm a little more comfortable with, but I know other people may have different opinions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Are you hoping for us to vote on an option?
Yes, that's what we'd like. And so if you'd like to share what your preference is, but not tonight, you want to think about it, that's fine. If you're comfortable tonight telling us which option you'd like, and we have a majority of the board, then we would go ahead and move in that direction, so it's your call. But we would like to have this on the agenda, if there's enough, if there's enough people on the board that are interested in doing this, we'd like to have this on the agenda for May 18th. And as we've mentioned on multiple occasions, you know, we certainly would love to be in a position of saying, "We don't need any of schools of choice kids," but $400,000 is $400,000, and we're listening to the feedback from the community back in January, and they'd rather see us do this than do something else for $400,000, so.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
I'm good with voting tonight. My preference is...
Not going to vote tonight. You're just going to tell us which preference.
Oh, I mean, picking an option.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm comfortable on picking an option. Verbage. My preference would be option number one. Option number four has an up to $464,000, although I think as we have been advised by Mrs. Oakwist, that's the high end based on the number of available students, but that probably will be a significantly lower number, because those kids will have already found other educational opportunities. So I, and I think that's tough on everybody. Our teachers hiring, I would prefer to see option number one. I would prefer to see this, that we choose an option tonight, so that we can have the appropriate window. We can stick with the June 19th window, and I think under the circumstances, we can easily take these kids on. I know that this wouldn't be recommended to us if we didn't have the capacity to handle these kids. It's a one-year thing. We have the option next year, whether to do something similar, something different. It's not like we're, this is a five-year commitment. It's this year. We'll see what happens with the state next year. And I would really like to give these kids the opportunity. And I think one of the sort of reservations that we may have is that, are we scoring kids from other districts? But I think, from my opinion, not every district is good for, there are different fits for different kids. So they may be great kids, but the educational system at their homeschool isn't a good fit for them. So I don't necessarily feel like we're necessarily going out and absconding with someone else's students. I think if their parents felt that there was a more appropriate educational opportunity for them in their own district, that they probably would not make that choice, and that they feel that LPS is a better fit for their child. And we're about educating kids, and the best fit, and I'm quite certain that there are children in the LPS district that don't feel that LPS is the best fit for their child, the parent doesn't feel, and that they are taking advantage of school of choice in other communities, that they may feel that their child is more inclined to succeed in.
Thank you. Ms. Lauren?
First, I have a question, Andrea. This May 19th through June 2nd window is a whole new window that maybe, or perhaps people that weren't interested in the first window didn't show any interest, and they could show interest in this window, right?
Yes.
So it may be a whole different group of children, right?
Yes.
Okay. My thought on this would be that if we have forum board members that say, "Let's go for it," that I would say that we go with the window option. As you explained, it makes more sense than waiting until these kids are placed in other situations. It's too late, it seems to me, in August. And I would agree that we go with option number one, and look at the 50 additional seats with those number of students, if the board is interested in doing that.
Now, I'll just comment, Mrs. Lauren, Mrs. Bonnefield, when you had talked about the August, one of the things this allows us to do is it allows Mrs. Demann and I to include those numbers in our enrollment numbers, and staff accordingly from the get-go, which looks a little bit different, as you know, to be able to do that now versus trying to add these students in, along with summer registrations that always come in. Makes it a bit more challenging to find those spots. And so it certainly allows us to staff appropriately and spread these students out in our different schools.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. I think Mrs. Bonnefield said it forth quite eloquently. I always think that, you know, one in the hand is worth two in the bush. And I think if we do a May 19th, June 2nd now, then rather than waiting for the unknown, and I think some of the things that you said, Mrs. Oakwist, that it helps you and Mrs. Demann set forth your staffing. It's going to make it a lot easier on staffing to get a number now and know now than it is later on when you're trying to slot people in. So I like that option. I would agree with option number one as well.
Mr. Sellers?
Just an added benefit going off of what you were just saying, is that if we can call back or reduce the number of teachers on layoff, they can prepare for the next school year, whatever their placement's going to be, they can spend the summer. Instead of, as you know, sometimes it's very last minute, teachers don't know what they're going to teach, where they're going to teach it. So I think another great option with one is, a benefit for option one is helping our teachers get prepared, so it's great.
President Burton?
I am also in favor of going with option number one. I agree with what my fellow board members have said so far. I'm not going to repeat that. I think it's also important to note that when we did our community forums in January, this board was very, very serious, as was our administration, about listening to what our community said. Our community loud and clear told us that they would much rather see us add students than cut programs for all of our kids. And if this is a way to add a small number of students, we're looking at adding an additional 50 students to our roughly 15,000 students that attend Livonia Public Schools, if we've done it successfully over this past year, if we can do that again this coming year, and therefore keep, as Mr. Sellers said, more of our staff, and more of our staff means more one-on-one attention to our students who are in Livonia Public Schools. More programs, more remedial classes, more advanced classes, more elective classes, more after-school opportunities, more of what makes LPS a lighthouse district. I am absolutely in favor of that. I do not see the state suddenly turning around and dumping a pile of money on all of our public school districts. We have yet, again, next year, we're going to have to be creative, and creative is just a very nice fluffy word for it. It's really, really, really hard, but we're having to work extremely difficultly. And I commend our administration for continuing to come forth with, to the board, with options that will make LPS continue to be LPS. If we can, if one piece of this puzzle, and it's only one piece, where there are several items on our agenda tonight that address creative cost savings and revenue enhancement, but if this is one way that we can honor what our community is saying in bringing extra money into our district, and bringing extra kids into our district without sacrificing what we can give to our LPS kids who've lived here, then I'm in favor of doing that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I believe that five of our board have spoken out in favor of option number one.
Are there any other comments?
Are there any other comments? Mrs. McDonald, you have not said anything.
I'm not sure yet. I, you know, I know the majority of you are in agreement on option one. You know, being that we just received this tonight, I kind of want to wait and see and kind of mull it over. I mean, it's apparent that the majority of you felt comfortable going forward in putting this to a vote. And, you know, I know, and you're right, Mrs. Burton, when we did have the community forums, people did, you know, indicate that they would prefer to have more kids added, you know, in this manner versus cutting programs, so. But, you know, at this point, I would kind of, for myself, would like to sit there and review it before I make a decision, so.
One question I have, if we look at the window of May 19th through June 2nd, does that enhance or positively affect our layoff and callback system by giving us an idea of how many extra students we'll have?
It all depends where the numbers fall. Like I said, we may have to hire an additional teacher, and so if there's one additional teacher, it's going to provide potentially one additional opportunity for that. It'll be interesting to see how it plays out this year. We haven't seen the kindergarten, or not kindergarten, but the elementary staffing projections yet, but remember, we had the retirement incentive, and so there's a chance we might be hiring elementary teachers this year, which would be a very refreshing thing for us to do. But that will play out, it potentially could.
So I am going to record that we will be put option one as a voting item on our May 18th.
Yep.
I will have a recommendation for your package.
Are we agreed with moving? Okay, I will report that.
Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. And the final item on the Finance Committee agenda is the cell tower discussion with Dr. Leep.
Actually, we're going to go back to student retention and retraction.
Oh, wow. I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to spend a few minutes updating the board on where we were at with our efforts. So as you know, again, still in revenue enhancement mode, we've been working hard. You know, we've made some decisions to attract students from outside of our school district to our community. But we've also said that one of our goals this year is to reach out to families that live in Livonia Public Schools' boundaries, but don't use our services. And so we know that there are some families that have made other educational choices, and we have high, high respect for that. But at the same point in time, you know, we felt that an aggressive marketing campaign to remind them about the opportunities here in Livonia Public Schools would be advantageous in regards to, you know, our overall enrollments. And, you know, for every 10 students that we're able to generate, that's an additional $80,000, and for the other 15,000 students again. And these are students who are, these are families who are eligible to utilize Livonia Public Schools, because they live within our boundaries. And so, and so we've been very active in, as it relates to that, and just wanted to update you where we're at with our efforts. Just prior to the spring break, both Andrea Oakwist and Steve Archibald authored a letter that went to pro-kill families here in our community. And within 10 days, we're pleased to report that we actually gave them, you know, just sort of information, "Contact your school. If you'd like more information," we actually gave them a card to fill out. And within, I think, the first 10 days, we had a dozen cards returned to us. And of those dozen cards, we've already identified two new registrants. So that's just one example of an effort for us to continue to reach out to our current community. And so that, we felt, was a success, and we still have follow-up as it relates to people that have shown an interest based on that communication. We also have reached out to our homeschool community, because students who are homeschooled can still come to their local public school district and take a class. And so it has to be a non-court class, but if you're a homeschool student, you could come to your local public school district and take an art class, or a music class, or you could go to the Career Center, as an example. And so we've actually reached out to the network of families here that homeschool students, and they've been receptive to us getting information to their families. And so we have done that, and are starting to receive some phone calls of families that are interested in having their child come in and take a class with us. So again, try to do a win-win. So if they still want to homeschool their kid, you know, we're certainly respectful of that, but if we can help provide them some support, and for us, for every portion of the day that they're here with us, we're able to count that student in our student count. So, and you know what happens sometimes? You get your foot in the door, and all of a sudden, you know, it's not quite what you thought, and, "Oh, my gosh, my kid's having a great experience, and made a couple friends," and before you know it, they're here with us full-time. So that's another avenue that we've used to reach out. In addition, we also are... In addition, we also are, we've been a part of a campaign through WDIV who has a marketing arm to reach out through social media to our families. Again, and they can target families within Livonia that potentially are not using local public school services. And so, it's a very targeted marketing campaign through social media, Facebook, email, et cetera, to target these families and just remind them that, you know, of the programs and services that we have here in Livonia. And so, we're looking forward to a final report from WDIV. The campaign just ended on April 30th, just last week. The initial reports that we received, though, were very positive. Stacy Jenkins reported to us that the first round of social media through Facebook increased our Facebook activity by 800%. And so, that was a real positive for us, so people were going to our Facebook page and checking us out, and we were seeing click-throughs into different program pages in our website. And through direct email, the percentage of people that would actually open it, because, you know, sometimes you get an email home, you don't open it. But for the percentage of people that were actually opening the email and then actually looking at our material and clicking on that would send them through to our website, the percentages are somewhat low. We actually sent out 25,000 emails, but of those people that opened it, the flow-through rate was higher than what they would typically see when they do this type of campaign for other entities. And so, if, I can't remember the exact percentages, but if it was 7%, normally, we were at like 11 or 12% of people that actually opened it up and went to our, went to our site. So, we feel that that's been a success so far, but wanted to let you know that we were doing that, and it's a very minimal cost. It's all, when you do social media, it's cheap, so that's a $7,000 item for us, and all's we need to do is generate one additional new student out of that, and we'd already be in the plus as it relates to our efforts for, you know, maintaining those students that are here in our community involved with us. And last, we've worked with our staffs. I go to every staff throughout the spring and usually just visit with them and update them, and we're also encouraging our staff to be ambassadors for our school district. We have 1,500 full-time staff, and no better ambassador than the person that you know as a neighbor or a friend or a relative or a colleague to promote our school district. And so, and as we said, that's a whole heck of a lot more fun than spending time talking about what position's gonna go away in the building. So, I think that's been well-received, and so, so far, I think we've had some pretty good response to date. Andrea, do you wanna add anything to that?
I was just gonna mention that the process, when we, after they received the letter and the blue postcard from Steve and from myself, we make the initial contact. So, their options were that they could come and tour one of our schools, they could choose a specific school to tour, or just have us contact with more information. And although we received 12 postcards, many of those postcards, the students, the families had two or three students. And so, then we made the initial contact and asked the principal then, within a two-day period, to contact the family and invite them in for a tour. We've had a great response to that, and again, we've already had some families already register. We've also asked them to extend an invitation, for instance, if they learn that that child is interested in music or in band, to invite them to a spring concert. If it's at an elementary school, perhaps the Art Fair Ice Cream Social, there's really nothing better than, you know, a little ice cream and a great-looking artwork to view. And so, we've asked them to reach out and make that personal connection, not only have them tour the school, but come back at a time where they can get a feel for the school community. And we've actually gotten a very nice response, and we're pretty excited about that and hope to continue to receive those, and we'll reach out immediately once we hear from any of those families. And again, that's recapturing those students who live within our boundaries that are making other choices, and sometimes we feel that they just need that, you know, maybe it arrives on the door, that, you know, the right day that they're having to make that decision about, am I going to make this decision for next year, where should I go? And sometimes it's just the right thing at the right time, and we're hoping that that's one way that that was that for those families, so we're excited to see those come in.
Andrea's actually taking questions in Costco parking lot, Myers. It's sort of cool, though, because, you know, obviously, we all know a lot of people, and we all know people, you know, for various reasons make other choices, and that's completely okay, but, you know, when they come and say, hey, you know, I got your letter, you know, I'd like to, you know, learn a little bit more or whatever, it's just, you know, it means that that outreach is...
I put them in my car and drive them personally.
That's right. Doesn't matter what time of night.
That's right.
We call a custodian up, open it up.
Here we come.
But, you know, it is that outreach. I tease that I make Steve and Andrea stand out on the Farmington Road with a sandwich board, so, you know, Livonia's the place, but we only get one or two cars a day that come in. I'm on top of the building with a bullhorn, but, you know, you get 1,500 people talking about it, and, you know, every 10 or 20 students makes a significant difference for us, so. We're continuing to reach out and wanted to share with you that it's just not about these handful of students we're accepting from outside of our school district, we're really reaching within our community here to people that live here, reminding them that we have a lot of great educational opportunities for the kids here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Dr. Leopold, are we giving like a welcome package over at City Hall in the chamber?
Yeah, we've done that historically through the chamber. We've also looked at doing that, we've done it through St. Mary Hospital, actually, when babies are born, they get information, they get stuff from Livonia Public Schools. The chamber's been active in helping us with that, both with our materials at their place and through outreach. We've had a student retention and attraction committee that's actually worked on all of these ideas over the last year. That's where Graduation Alliance came in, as an example. That was a way to, how can we recapture kids that we've lost? And so, we're talking about at the high school, what can we do for some of these kids? And we've had a lot of interesting conversations, and one of the biggest learnings for us was having a local Realtor come in to our committee, because we were ready to focus a lot of effort in regards to, well, every time a house opens up, you know, we need to go out and really reach out to those Realtors to let people know, you know, give out the Livonia Public Schools' information and so on. And what we learned from this Realtor, after, you know, getting ready, but, you know, we're ready to jump on this, and this is gonna be our number-one effort, what we learned from the Realtor was, you know, they said, great, we'll be happy to pass out the information on your behalf and give information about the school district, you've got a lot of great materials, but the bottom line is when a whole home opens up in Livonia or Northern Westland, there are families already there. They said, you know, so we'll hand it out, but I can tell you, the three homes that I have, for example, that I'm showing right now, have families, four families, all coming in. So, we've seen a turn in the real estate market, and Livonia still is an attractive place to raise a family. And so, her basic message to us was, you really don't need to go after that market, you need to look at other things, because when there's a house open in Livonia for a new family to come in, basically, there are people that are waiting to buy those homes, so. So, it was just an interesting learning.
And we do get information out to all of our local preschools, so we send it out to about 24 different preschools, to all of the apartment complexes. They get registration packets, they get welcome packets, information about our points of pride, information about the schools for that particular attendance area. And so, really, there are a lot of nice marketing pieces that Mrs. Jenkins and Mrs. Patterson have been working on, that they get out to all of those folks, and so, they really help us with that outreach, especially as we start talking about kindergarten registration in those times, so.
Mr. Sanders?
Just, if I'm a new parent moving into Livonia, how do I know which school my child will go to, what triad they would be in? Is there an easy way for us, for them to know that, or is it a little difficult for them to find? I don't know.
They contact the communications department, and then they have each of our, each of our sections of our district identified, and so, once they give the address, either Katie or Stacy would let them know their schools and their triad.
Okay.
And then we encourage them to contact the local school so they can go register, go see the school.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to commend the Attraction Committee on the innovative and exciting things that they're doing to reach out to families that are already in Livonia, that's sometimes an often overlooked segment.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on to the next item on the Finance Committee agenda, which is the cell tower discussion with Dr. Leopold.
Yes, speaking of revenue enhancement, again, as you know, we've been speaking, talking probably for the last six months about the potential, Lisa, you can come all the way up.
Thank you.
We've been talking about the concept of potentially getting a one-time lump sum revenue from the current cell towers that we have in exchange for the current revenue streams that are on the existing poles. And we were actually contacted several months ago by a particular company that suggested that they would be willing to do this. And so, we did our due diligence in regards to this particular option. As I shared with you, we actually went out and talked to our attorneys who have constructed these deals for other school districts and other entities, so they're very familiar with them. They looked at the particular offer that we have received and feel that it's very competitive. In addition to that, we asked our business office to reach out to another reputable company that does this, and then also get a quote from them to see, again, if we were getting a fair market value. We did that, got the contact, again, through our attorneys, because they deal with several of these companies, and got a quote. In addition to that, we hired at a very small fee independent consultant, sort of like Plant, Moran, Cressa, who comes in, only represents the school district, and looked at the particular offer to see if it seemed to be a fair offer. And so, from all parties, they feel that we've been given a fair offer as it relates to a one-time payment for this particular revenue stream. And so, we're looking just right now, we've got multiple cell towers across our school district, right now, we're looking at just the tower at Stevenson High School. And if we were to do that, I mentioned that we really have a couple of different options. One is to have a limited number of years where we would have this agreement with the company, and one would be an agreement in perpetuity, which means they would always have that opportunity to utilize that space for revenue generation. One of the conversations that we had last time that we said we wanted to get clarified before bringing a recommendation to you was what happens to that space? And so, in this case, we're looking at about 1,000 square feet, which is the size of a classroom. And the reason they would have that much square feet, it would really go around the current cell tower, but what happens is that every time they have someone that comes and utilizes the cell tower for, you know, cellphone service or whatever it might be for, they have to have equipment on-site to make sure that the, that it's working and that, you know, can be repaired or whatever. And so, they need so much space for equipment and so on, and they want that cordoned off, understandably. And so, when we look at, what we would be doing is really looking at this in our eyes like an easement, and so, if for some reason we wanted to do something different with the property down the road, we have to think about, well, what are our options at that point in time, and we wanted to clarify that. One idea was, what if we wanted to move the pole to another location because we decided we wanted that space for something else? And so, when you think about that, you know, when you think about the space at Stevenson High School, and this is out by the football field, you know, the chances that it will be used for something else within the next number of years would, seems to be rather unlikely, because, I mean, you can go back 50 years and it's been a high school. And right now, with our enrollment trends, we don't expect that we ever would see that property be used for anything but a high school. But having said that, you know, 200 years from now, we're, you know, we can't predict exactly what, you know, the space may be used for. The good news is that, you know, if they're gonna yell at us, they're gonna have to go to the graveyard and find our grave and scream and curse us, but, you know, we certainly have that in the back of our minds, that we're being good stewards of our property. And so, we did talk to our attorney about what our options are, and we're going to look at working something within the agreement that would allow us to either move the cell pole or work within that if there was a specific need that we had down the road that we can't foresee right now. And it could mean that we would have to pay for the cost of doing that. And so, as we looked at that from a revenue enhancement, you know, risk-reward type of opportunity, even doing that would seem to make sense based on the offer that we received. As you know, the offer is approximately $900,000 for an agreement in perpetuity. If it was a 30-year lease, it would be reduced down to $480,000. But when you look at it, as long as we have something that we feel allows us some flexibility, it's no different than any of our properties that have all sorts of easements on them right now. We have to work around those easements, and we'd have to work around this particular issue. So, if in 70 years, for some reason, we felt there was a need to either build a new football stadium, you know, sell the property for whatever reason, we would be in a position to be able to work with that company, whoever owned it, to say that, you know, we wanna reclaim that space, and we'll be happy to pay to have it moved or whatever. And even if that was a couple hundred thousand dollars to do that, we're still $700,000 to the good at the end of the day, and, you know, no different than any of our properties, anytime you're repurposing it or doing something, rebuilding or whatever, we have to deal with the existing easements that are there already. So, from a risk-reward standpoint, we still think it's a fair, it's a fair risk for us to take, even if many, many years down the road, something unforeseen is needed for that particular property, we feel that there'll be enough options for us to deal with that at that particular point in time. And, you know, as we're talking and talking and talking about revenue enhancement, it's really hard to look at $900,000 as a revenue stream for something, you know, I'm no, you know, I'm no, you know, I can't predict what it will be, but to think in 50 years, there's, you know, I mean, they're gonna be doing cell towers through water, or they'll be doing it through osmosis, or, you know, we may need the spot for a space station landing or something, but, you know, and I'm anticipating that, you know, the value of that's gonna continue to diminish over the years, which is one of the reasons that organizations are looking at getting the money upfront as opposed to the long-term revenue stream. So, it's a risk-reward proposition, but as we're looking at the budget next year, $900,000 would go a long, long way in regards to us trying to meet our objectives, and we're prepared to recommend doing that with the Stevenson High School pole. So, I'll open that up to discussion, and we also talked about maintenance in the agreement, what we have to do with that 1,000 square feet, what's our responsibility, what is their responsibility, that would be spelled out. And other things, Lisa, you can think of?
Well, I think that was the last one that had come a question last week, that make sure we get that spelled out in the agreement, so we're working through that.
And we know what our responsibility is, and there is.
Yeah, and we've talked with Clark Hill about the agreement, so I think, you know, based on our prior experience, we have some good ideas about what we think needs to go into those agreements to make it work for the district and, you know, also make it work for the company, so.
Yeah, this is a pretty significant, this is a pretty different proposal than we brought to you, whatever it was, a year and a half or two ago, in regards to, that was a much more long-term issue, they wanted to have a lot of other agreements, if they used the tower for other purposes and other revenue-generating sources, what would happen? It was pretty complex last time, this is a little bit more cut and dried.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. I have a few questions. Number one, I guess, who's the company?
Yeah, it's American Tower, that's the name of them, and they are the, they do this type of work throughout Michigan.
Okay, and our current lease revenue is how much annually?
On that particular pole...
I want to say 60, but I don't...
Yeah, I was gonna say about $60,000 a year. We'll double check on that.
Okay, and how many more years do we have left on that lease?
It's not a real long lease.
Yeah.
Less than 10, four or five.
So, how would the renegotiation go?
There is no renegotiation, we're done.
We will be done?
We get the one-time revenue, and it's over.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the deal, it's a one-time revenue, risk-reward, you get the money upfront, we don't have to worry about down the road, cell towers not being...
So, they deal with whatever, so, who owns the tower now, or who is the tower?
It's, who's leasing the tower?
I think it's Verizon.
Yeah.
Verizon, okay, so then, this American Tower, they would contact, we'd be in contact with Verizon, and they would negotiate whatever it was that...
Exactly.
Right, so they would take over the revenue stream?
Yep. And it's you, so it really is, I mean, there are two issues with this. For us, it's an issue of generating some one-time revenue to help with our budget next year as we're looking at programs for kids. That's really the purpose of us bringing this forward to you. From a long-term revenue, you know, opportunity loss standpoint, you know, they're taking the risk on, and, you know, at the end of the day, I'm assuming they're hoping they're gonna make more than $900,000 on this. I mean, otherwise, they wouldn't be doing this, it's not a charity issue, so, you know, they've made the assumption that that's the case, but they're taking on the risk, too, that indeed, there'll be still need for renters, you know, so many years down the road, because, you know, it's 60,000 a year, they've gotta get quite a few years in to get up to the $900,000, plus whatever, you know, money's lost in regards to, you know, the time value of money, so. Yeah, so they're taking a risk, but they're looking at reward, and we're taking, we're looking at the reward versus the risk and the opportunity for one-time revenue.
And we've had that cell tower on the property for how long?
Gosh, I can't remember when we put it up. Steve, were you the principal when we put that up, or no?
No.
So, it's been longer than 12 years?
Oh, it's been longer than 12 years, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Steve was responsible for checking in the cell tower when he was the principal, he'd go out there, make sure there are no leaves that were blocking the, the way... He'd go out there, make sure there are no leaves that were blocking the waves.
Did he have the aluminum foil?
Yeah, we made him do that too.
President Burton, President Burton. Dr. Leepa, you said it's about 1,000 square feet. Is that the amount of space that is fenced off right now, or are you saying with this agreement?
A little bit larger.
Okay, so with this agreement, there's enough space for them to bring, say, a truck or other piece of equipment up in order to...
Yeah, not a truck, but I mean, I'm trying to think of the type of equipment they'd be putting out there.
Well, they have, they have containers that have equipment and electronics and other things that make cell towers work.
Yeah, so it's like a storage.
Might have to have a storage container or other
Okay.
piece of furniture-type equipment that would store their equipment.
And before we brought the final agreement to you, because we still have to look at, make sure all the things within the agreement are things that we're fine with.
Right.
Before we brought that to you, you know, Lisa would drive out there, we'd walk out, look at the layout, actually walk it. We've got an idea about how large it is, and we know it's a little bit bigger than it is right now.
Okay.
And we understand why they want that too.
Right, they need to have legal, legal right in order to come up and approach it and do their work on it and so forth.
Yeah, and they want to store stuff there.
Yeah.
So they're not, you know, hauling stuff back and forth all the time. They can just have a technician go out there
Okay.
and do whatever they have to do.
It won't be like they don't get to leave their Christmas stuff out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I've seen it a zillion times, and it's just, it's kind of part of the landscape. I don't even notice it, but it looked like it was smaller than 1,000 square feet, so.
It is.
Like other utility areas we have within our buildings and our structures and our plans, we have those gated off and, you know, we make them safe, so.
Right.
Safe and protected.
Yeah.
And from what we know right now, if American Tower decides not to use this for a cell tower in the future, what is the provision that's made?
Those are the things we'll have to make sure that are in the agreement.
Okay.
So that, you know, who's responsible to take it down, get rid of it, or I would assume it would all be them. And that's what, those are the kinds of items that we would make sure that are in the agreement.
And do, do you know the answer to this question yet? You may not. If they decide they want to use that, that tower for another purpose, is that something that's automatically granted, or is that something they would have to come back to LPS and renegotiate that? I mean, say, cell towers, they didn't even exist 30 years ago. I doubt they'll exist 30 years from now, but something might.
Right.
I mean, something that they would use that property for, or something that they obviously may not have any use for the property at all. But when the day comes that it's not needed for a cell tower, what happens then?
Right, so that's the kind of language we'll make sure is not ambiguous, so that when, if, that we understand.
Yeah, we'd want to put a restaurant there, for example.
Right, no.
Not even a 1,000 square foot, but that's what we'd want to be protected from, so we know it's for like use.
Okay.
Which is typically what we would, what we would request. And again, that's where their heads are at, you know. They're making the, they're making the risk-reward assumption that it'll be good for so many years for its existing purpose, and, you know, we're doing the same.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
I would like to put in no Christmas tree look-alike cell tower.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. I'm assuming that if they service the tower now, they're using Randy's helicopter to come out
Oh, that would, that would be scary.
and have a guy come down. So they have to have access to it.
Part of the agreement.
Okay, to use the helicopter?
Yeah. No, to tell me I can't.
So I'm assuming even presently, there is some provision to allow them access
Absolutely.
to that.
Yes.
For their own maintenance and...
Currently, they can. Yep, currently, they can. They come in right now and they do, they do whatever, you know, or they may, you know, they may find another renter on it, you know. In those cases, right now, we get a portion of their revenue, but they could find another renter on there, and they've got to go up and actually put it up there.
Right, and they have to get there somehow. And I'm assuming that whatever agreement we would come up with, with American Towers, that would have to include a provision
Yeah, it's an access provision.
that gives us, gives them permission from us to access that.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And it goes both ways, because we have our lights on that tower right now also, so we also need access for maintenance, so.
Our lights on the football field.
They're higher than five foot six.
Yeah, he's a good climber though.
He's a good climber.
He's a good climber.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Bonifield?
So I guess just to put it in a brief sense, really, the usage, other than expanding the area by a few feet, the usage currently is, the expectation is not going to change. It's going to be basically the same access, the same everything that it is right now.
Yeah.
I would like to say, from my point of view, I like the, in perpetuity agreement. I think, one, the chances of that cell tower being relevant in 30 years is very small. My other concern is, is that I can see the cell tower sitting out there for 30 years. If we sign the 30-year agreement and the end of the 30-year agreement comes, and it just sits there, and we've lost all that revenue because nobody knows any different. And it just, nothing ever happens with it. We don't ever renegotiate it. We don't go out and tear it down because nobody knows what to do with it. You know, I do, you know where I'm going with that. I mean, it just, because it's there and nobody looks at it. And the other thing I'm considering is the chances of changing the use of that tower strictly at the end of the 30 years, where, you know, there's no cha, if we're going to have to change it, I would imagine it'll be within the next 30 years, and that, that 30-year cutoff isn't going to be the magic bullet for, you know, all of a sudden, we need that property. We're going to need it before, we're going to need it after, after 30 years. If we do remember and we re-sign it after 30 years, then chances are it'll be another 30 years. So you've got, you know, a two-minute window in there to change the use on it. So I think for an additional $400,000 and, yes, maybe $60,000, but for the next how many ever years, but I just, I can't see, I just don't see that that's going to be a relevant piece of equipment for that period of time.
Yeah, and as we've discussed it, when you think about the potential use, I mean, if you went back 30 years, which would be 1985, it was used for the same exact thing it's used for today. And those bleachers are in the same exact spot, and so...
And we have beautiful new press boxes that are going to last for the, you know, the next, the next, another 50 years.
So, yeah, when you're looking at down the road, I mean, what could happen? You know, sometimes some future board decided that they wanted to build a brand-new stands there, you know, brand-new stands, like one of these gorgeous new, you know, Texas football stadiums, that it's all stone and everything. And, you know, if that's the case, well, guess what? We'd probably have to move the football field, you know, 100 feet this way.
Yeah, it's not like it's, we're landlocking our cell field.
Exactly, so, you know, but that football field's been there for a lot longer than 30 years, and, you know, I would anticipate, and it's used for track and soccer, et cetera, even if football somehow disappeared out of the American genre.
Yeah, right. It'll be replaced by Quidditch.
Yeah.
We've got flying brooms, we need a cell tower.
Yeah, so it's a risk-reward decision, but, you know, we're in the revenue ideas right now, and this, we think, is a way for us to provide some additional revenue for us in the short term here. And we'll be looking at our other revenue, our other cell towers as we're moving forward, about opportunities for them, and, you know, determining if those are good ideas to bring to you also.
Can we interest them in a second one?
Oh, I think so. Yeah, I think absolutely, yeah. If you remember, I talked, maybe we can spread it out over three, four, five years. We've got a revenue stream coming in, pretty large revenue stream for multiple years as opposed to just a one year.
That'd be really cool.
Yeah.
President Burton?
I'm sorry.
No, I'm blessed.
Okay. I am in favor of going forth with, with the whole cell tower concept right now, and looking at either perpetuity versus the 30 years, seeing as our other easements are all perpetuity. I mean, our easements with our utility companies, for example, and our telephone poles and so forth, those are all perpetuity. I don't see any reason to make this one any different. For the value that is garnered by Livonia Public Schools, I would much rather see us go ahead and put this in the same type of category as we do our other easements, and make it perpetuity and bring in the nearly $1 million from this.
Mrs. Bonifield?
My question is, is what further action do we need to, I need to record what further action. So if Mrs. McDonald has a question...
I do have a question. Dr. Leepa, when do you think the contract's going to be somewhat finalized for our review?
It'll be sometime. This will not be a May 18th item for you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say, my guess is probably this summer.
Okay, then you'll bring it back to another committee in the whole...
Yes, more than likely, I'd bring back the details to another committee meeting and say, hey, you know, so it's July 11th, and we've got a good contract, and let's go through the details now, like we did last time with Unison, if you remember. And, you know, because we went through it at that point in time, it didn't work out, you know, it just didn't work out. But, yeah, that's the game plan, is it'll take at least a couple of months, I would guess, to find, hammer out the details with our attorneys and their attorneys. And so probably, yeah, this is May 1st, you know, probably around, you know, late June, early July, we'll probably have something to bring to you. We'll bring it back to committee meeting, finalize the detail, and if it's something that's, that makes sense at that point in time, we'll go ahead and, you know, make sure the details are, look good, and bring that to you, and then go ahead and vote on it.
Okay.
So I would say it'd be a couple months.
What we're doing is we're going to consent to move forward with this.
And that's allowing us to continue to engage with our attorneys, to work out the details with their attorneys, and come back with something that we would think the board would agree with based on all the things we've talked about, and then, and then bring that forward to you.
Okay, so then I will report that the board has consented to move forward.
Yeah.
Thank you. That concludes President Burton's, the Financial Committee report for tonight.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Policy Committee. Mrs. Bonifield?
For the Policy Committee, we have one item which is listed, it's BD1 and BD2, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Leepa unless, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's pretty, conceptually, it's pretty straightforward. As we were looking at the process, you know, I mean, you guys have done a phenomenal job on your board policies over the last couple of years, and it's an ongoing process. And as we looked through the last time, we were looking at the different policies and bylaws. We looked at our policies and said, you know, it's not very clear, our current practice of bringing the, a new policy or a new bylaw to the board for a first reading and then a second reading. And so we had a lot of conversation about that because, you know, it's been our practice, and we said, boy, it's not very, spelled out very well. And so we talked about this at other committee and study sessions on multiple occasions. And the board felt that probably the best thing to do is to really reflect, first of all, the board felt that, you know, rather than trying to go backwards and just have one reading, which really your current bylaws would allow for a policy change, rather than going backwards on that, you guys felt because of transparency and interest of having the community to see the policy first before you voted on it, that indeed you wanted to maintain that practice. And when we said that, then you guys said, well, let's change the policy and the bylaw to make sure it's following that practice that we want to continue to follow. And so what you had before you said in BD1 and BD2 is language that really reflects the fact that you want to continue your practice to have a first and second reading. And it's much clearer and just laid out much, much better now, I think anyways. And so we drafted something up, we gave it to Tammy as the policy chair. Tammy had a couple suggestions, we incorporated those in. Jill actually had a couple suggestions, our resident policy watcher in my office, and came up with this particular policy. The changes in the first paragraph are really just more grammatical in regards to having it read better. And then the big changes in the second, where it says, "The board, very clearly, the board will place a first reading of the proposed or amended bylaw on the agenda of a regular or special voting meeting. Consideration of the written form of the bylaw will be placed on the agenda of a subsequent regular or special voting meeting. Bylaws so established shall have immediate effect, and then formal adoption of bylaw shall be recorded in the minutes." So that's all the same. The big change there is just the fact that we're pretty clear that there's a first reading at a regular or special meeting. And this provides you the flexibility, because in the past, we've used special meetings if we wanted to, if we needed to get something done. If you remember, we had a requirement to be, to meet a state law in regards to a new policy that we're doing. So we had a special meeting and had the first reading there, regular meeting to vote on it. So we provided the flexibility to be able to continue to do that. But it's pretty clear that you have to bring it to one meeting, and then it comes to a second meeting. So, any comments on that particular paragraph?
I think it looks good.
If not, if you look at BD2, it's basically the same thing. The board will place a first reading of the proposed or amended policy, not bylaw, on the agenda of a regular or special voting meeting. Consideration of the final written form of the policy will be placed on the agenda of the subsequent regular or special voting meeting, which pretty much lays out, you know, of course, you guys usually talk about it multiple times before it ever gets to the first reading. But it also allows you in the first reading, you may make changes and so on, then it's in a final written form before the vote. Does that cover it, do you think, Tammy?
Yeah, thank you very much.
So, good clarification, you know, we were just reading this, and we were trying to find where it said you had to do it, and it was sort of clear in the bylaw, but not really, and not clear at all in the policy. And the board was really, you know, you guys had come to consensus that you wanted to make sure to continue that practice, so it's just reflecting that practice.
Mrs. McDonald?
I just have a question in reference to board operations and what we discussed with the Code of Ethics and the methods of asking for documentation and those changes.
So, just for, we'll get to that question. Is everybody okay with the bylaws and the policies? Because I'm assuming your question doesn't relate to this bylaw.
Well, it has to relate to that, because if we had discussion about...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
No, no, no.
So you're saying, how does it relate to this?
Right.
Yeah, so what would happen is, is if there's a bylaw change, or if there's a policy change in the board ethics policy which was recommended, it would just go to the board for a first reading, and then it would go to the board for a second reading.
Okay, but what about board operating procedures? That wouldn't qualify, or that does qualify under here?
No, board, board operating procedures are not either policies or bylaws. So board operating procedures are basically just agreed upon operating procedures by the current board at that point in time. And you guys work on that as a, as a, just sort of a living document. It's not part of your policies.
Okay, but it's not the same then?
Yeah, yeah, it's not part of your policies. Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? So, since we've been following these procedures anyway, then both of these will go on, I guess they're both bylaws anyway. Both of these will go on for a first reading on May 18th.
Yep.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
And unless there's any other questions, I have completed my portion of the agenda.
All righty. We have reached the end of our agenda this evening. We have a rather large contingent from Perrinville here tonight. We'd like to thank you for your attendance specifically. Want to let you folks know too, that we have received a great deal of communication on, on a lot of our, our cost containment and revenue enhancement ideas, and specifically Perrinville, which was brought up recently. I want to thank the whole Perrinville community for their continued communication with the administration and with the board on that. It is being taken very, very seriously, as are, as you can tell by the length of time we spent on many of these items, taking all these items very seriously. And there is, there is more communication to come on each item, Perrinville and every item on our agenda tonight. As you can tell, this board takes cost savings and revenue enhancement very, very seriously. It's, it's been said that, that all we do is look at budget. And one very, very important role of the Board of Education is to monitor the budget and to approve the budget. We have to do that in order to provide opportunities and programs for our students. I'd like to say we have 15,000 employees that all come to work for free every day, but unfortunately, they have a job to do, and, and it's this board's job to make sure that we're providing appropriate opportunities for our students and payment for our employees and make that whole system work. And we take it very, very seriously. We are in yet another year of likely inappropriate funding from the state of Michigan, and we have to, yet again, look at other ways to fund the opportunities we give every student in Livonia Public Schools. We take that responsibility very, very seriously. As much as it gives us joy to recall teachers, to, to renew cooperative agreements and so forth with surrounding school districts, we have a fiscal responsibility that we absolutely have to make that budget work. If, if any members of the community have other suggestions for cost-saving or revenue enhancement ideas, I encourage you to get those suggestions to Dr. Leepa, who is, who coordinates our, our budget talks, and, and make sure that those flow appropriately back and forth to administration, back and forth to the Board of Education, as we hammer out all the questions and answers and figure out what is best for the ongoing, not only survival, but thriving of Livonia Public Schools. So I thank those folks who are in attendance at our meeting tonight, who've been communicating with us very regularly, and those folks who are on the community, who are communicating with us on, on a variety of topics. We do take your budget very, very seriously. We take every kid equally seriously. And in order for the system to work, we've got to make sure that the two go hand in hand. If, if you are frustrated, join the board and the administration. We're all frustrated right now with, with what's going on at the state level, and what, and I'll speak for myself, in my opinion, is a lack of appropriate funding for public education drives me crazy. It drives me nuts to hear that we're giving more and more money to education every year without... without having the same voice say, yeah, but we're taking more and more money away in, in this need or that need, until all that money goes into our classroom, it's, it's, it is the voice of many, many boards across the state to stay, to say, listen to what's going on, not only on education on the whole, but how much money goes into our classrooms. Mrs. Bonnefield is, is a huge champion for reminding our community of, of that very fact. If you are frustrated about that situation, please contact your state legislators, as someone said to me last week, as a board, you're basically, you're not deciding how much money you get, you're basically given an allowance, and you're trying to decide how best to spend it, and I said to the individual, you're exactly right, we don't have a lot of control over how much comes in, we can control some smaller pieces, as you've heard discussion tonight, but we have to deal with the pot we've been given, and try to make it reach as far as we possibly can, to make sure we have quality teachers in front of every student every day, and we have appropriate programs that reach all of the huge variety of needs that our students have, their, their absolute needs and their desires to have extracurricular activities, elective classes and so forth, to not only meet their needs, but enrich their lives, and that's what this board is trying to do, trying to balance those, those limited dollars that we have coming in, and make them stretch as far as we can to every kid. Reach out to your state legislators if, if you have opinions on, on state funding for education, this board certainly does on a regular basis, and the, as, as Dr. Leepa has said, words from parents reach farther than words from school administrators, we all have got to do that on a regular basis. There is a, an election tomorrow, Proposal 1, it certainly affects roads, it also has very significant effects on education, so we encourage you to get out and, and cast your vote as you see fit. Anything else on, anyone else want to say hi?
Um, Mrs. Bonnefield? Is there, if people are still interested in finding information on Proposal 1, I'm assuming they can go to our website for information?
Yes, yep, thank you very much, yes, we have, we have different, we've got a Q and A on there, we've got a short video, because we do get questions on how it impacts education, and so we specifically have tailored that information for the educational component of Proposal 1, so thank you.
So if you're still considering, if you're still taking into consideration what your vote will be, please, if you can, go to the LPS website and, and take those, that information into consideration when you're making your choice.
Yes, we will not, we will not use our, utilize our, our school resources to tell you how to vote, we will, however, answer your questions about how it does and does not affect education, so if you'd like to get any more information about that, you can reach one of us, you can see the, the video, you can give an answer, or call, rather, to Dr. Leepa's office, we'd be happy to answer factual questions about that, but, as, as pertains to education for you.
And just going off of that, it's also easily found on the Facebook page, too, maybe, maybe, instead of hunting through a website, I said, it's right there, a couple things down on the Facebook page.
Yep.
On a slightly different note, tonight, we heard a lot of very creative suggestions of ways to enhance our revenue, who would think that leasing out a cell tower would bring in $900,000? Money needs are real, and there are a lot of really interesting potential ideas and thoughts, so I'd like to empower our community, if you have an idea or a thought, it doesn't have to be perfectly formulated, if you think that you have an idea that might be a revenue-generating idea, please contact either Dr. Leepa or anyone on the board, you know, we won't implement it unless it's something that's going to benefit our district, and certainly we can work to flesh it out, if it's an idea that you don't have well-formulated, that's okay, please feel free to, to bring your ideas forward, we're, we're all ears.
That is the end of our agenda, I wish you all a good evening, thank you very much for joining us.
Do we go ahead and put the RFP out for the property? You know how I got the draft, or what's...
I think we did, yes. Hey, Lisa, did the RFP go out for the property yet? I know you sent me another, yeah, okay, yeah, I knew it was going on or just...
I was gonna have to put an update.